Good afternoon. Thank you for joining us for the special called meeting of the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Board of Education, July 22nd, 2015. We will begin this evening with a pledge of allegiance and a prayer. Will you please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father, thank you for the blessings that you give us each and every day. And Lord, as we are enjoying our summer months and some time off, we ask you to continue to put a blanket of protection over all of our students and our families. And we thank you for the staff that's been working so hard to prepare a wonderful 2015, 2016 school year for them. Lord, as we meet and deliberate tonight, let us always speak with kindness. Lord, let us remember that we are thankful and privileged to be in this position to serve. And thank you for this community in which we are serving. In your name we pray. Amen. Okay, we have a request to amend the agenda this afternoon, and that is to add a discussion item D and action item B, which will be the approval of the HAW Outdoor Family Film Series. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Yes.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Thank you very much. Okay, first up on our discussion items are the options for the 2015-2016 bond referendum. And I believe Dr. Emery will start us off.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Glad you're here. Glad everybody's here. Sort of a long anticipated opportunity here. So I want to just get us started, and we have several folks who are going to help present this since there's a lot of information here, and we thought a variety of faces might make it a little more entertaining. And first, I want to thank the board for being patient with us as we worked on this, and a lot of hours have gone into the options that you're going to see here. Second, I want to thank those folks who stepped up and volunteered to be a part of our subcommittee. And I'm not going to name everybody, but if you were on our subcommittee for these options, would you stand so the board can see all of you folks who helped us from a variety of areas? Yes. So we appreciate very much their involvement. We want to start with a guiding question, and we appreciate the board's involvement. Remember back in February at our retreat, we talked a little bit about values and beliefs that drive this. And clearly, we have chosen to approach this just a little bit differently from in the past in that we have looked at a $250 or $300 million bond as an opportunity to advance our goals, as an opportunity to really support enhanced achievement for students. And so as you look at these options today, we hope you'll see that some of them are clearly very comprehensive, some of them are focused just on meeting growth and age of building needs, and others directly address programming areas that we think we could use facilities to help us enhance our goals as a district. Part of my goal, my job tonight is to just remind everybody of where we are and where we're going as we go through this. For our community, our intent today is not to make a major or final recommendation. And we ask your patience as we sort of walk through the timeline. We think we have a timeline that allows a lot of reflection and a lot of input from our community so that by the time we get to spring and make a final recommendation, that it's reflective of what our community believes is important and what they will support when they go to the polls in November of 2016. So today, again, we're sharing our options with the board, four of them, not one final or one recommendation. During the month of August is time for the board, with a little bit of summertime left, to give suggestions to staff, to give us feedback, to ask questions, to ask for data. This is a time board members may say, "This is a piece I can absolutely not support." Or here's, "There's a piece missing. Did you look at that? We'd like you to consider it." So that when we begin in the fall, September and October, to ask of our community on key points what they can support, we have given the board the first opportunity at that process. So again, in September and October, we'll do some polling, surveying in the community on pieces and parts of this. And you'll see later that in the communications plan that folks can begin doing that immediately in some form or fashion. In late October, we will share with the board that feedback that we've collected. The board has also asked that we have an opportunity in the fall to have a joint meeting with our county commissioners because we consider them partners on this journey, and it would be an opportunity for our county commissioners to hear that public feedback on these options at the same time. In November, we'll refine them, narrow. Obviously, you will see tonight that we have some big dreams, and we may not have all the dollars to support the big dreams. Narrow them so that we take a more refined slate of options to the community for public forums in January and February, with the goal of this board approving a recommendation in April that then would go on to our county commissioners, giving them a nice 60-day window to ask us questions or work with this before they take final action to put it on the ballot. Where did we start? We think it's really important for our community to understand that we have not had a facility issue in 10 years. And while there was supposed to be one in 2010, and a lot of work went into that, and there was then supposed to be one in 2012, we have been a nice chunk here without addressing growing facility needs. This board, sworn in in December, has spent an inordinate amount of time looking at lots of factors that have an impact on a bond issue. They've spent time looking at age of facilities, growth and capacity, our magnets choices, programming, the diversity and equity issues that face our district, as well as the board retreat that I mentioned earlier. So all of these gave us a great starting point for building the options that you're going to see this evening. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Darrell Walker, who has since 2006 sort of guided this work, and we thought he was the right voice to share how we managed that work and got to this point. So thank you, Darrell.
Thank you, Dr. Emery and board, and to the public and community. If I could, thank them for their past support in bond referendums. You know, this community's always been very supportive of public schools. So what's gone on since 2006, it's important to note that numbers you see tonight were no surprise. We always have seen big numbers as we've worked through bond referendums. In 2006 bond referendum, $422 million were identified and sent to the county as possible needs and projects. That was pared down to $250 million bond referendum in 2006. So the projects, obviously, there's a gap there between 4022 and 250. Those projects that were cut provided us a starting point, but I think it's important to note that that doesn't mean that they're necessarily guaranteed in this bond referendum, though you will see some of them. The final decision will be, may not be, that they stay in there. A new list was created, as Dr. Emery mentioned, in January 2010 for a possible 2012 referendum. Those projects' costs ranged from $344 million to $471 million, sort of depending on built-in inflation cost during that time. The costs included in this presentation are present-day construction costs. They will need to factor in inflation when we narrow down the final list. So right now, there are no inflationary percentages built into these numbers. And to give you an example of what these numbers are made up from, in the '06 bond, those projects were budgeted at $140 a square foot. Our bids back in the '06 bond through '10 came in about $120 a square foot. So obviously, the economy was very competitive, great timing for this community as it related to construction projects. The Davie County project that was recent release came in at $175 a square foot. So the cost that you see tonight related to the $175 a square foot, and it's sort of common, what we've seen across the country recently. So here are the projects that were removed from the 2006 bond referendum, as you see before you. Again, you may see a lot of these as a starting point, but these are the projects, main projects that were pulled out of that. You can see there's a series of elementaries, middles, and highs, as well as a couple of new schools that were adjusted and pulled out. Also, some, part of this bond referendum and this plan tonight that you'll see, and this was not the first time you've seen this list, we've had a lot of discussion around the 17 buildings that are, there are more than 50 years old, that have some systems issues such as heating, air conditioning, lighting, roofing are outdated, program space is outdated, and we have some ADA access needs to be updated. So you can see the list before you. I do want to highlight a couple of things because I do want to give some credit to our county commissioners as it relates to our 2/3 bond money, and especially as you see the top items, Lewisville Elementary. And you will not see Lewisville Elementary in our plan, but if you may remember, in the most recent Buildings and Grounds, we talked about using some money to redo our kitchen and cafeteria at Lewisville Elementary. We used our 2/3 bond money to do that. We've used 2/3 bond money also at the Haynes Gym floor, we replaced it. But go back to Lewisville again, basically what's really left at Lewisville is some lighting, some ceiling tiles, those type items, and then the school will basically be totally rebuilt. So we've utilized some 2/3 bond money and not having to put it in this bond program. So if there's questions about that, that's sort of the reasoning behind that. I'm going to move into a little bit about growth and capacity. As you can see, those numbers from '04, '05, right at close to 48,000 students, our 1450 numbers knocking on the door, 54,000 students. In the '06, we had mobile classroom, we had 358 units, classrooms. Currently, in 2014, we have 465. So we reduce some in the '06 bond and is gradually starting to grow back. And so you'll see where that growth is coming from here shortly. So as we talk about adding capacity at some schools, we're also talking about moving students from mobile classrooms to brick and mortar. You remember, we had some of those conversations as well as a team and a unit at some of our Buildings and Grounds meeting. Hopefully, this was not new to you as well. This sort of came out and sort of backs up the presentations we had from Jeff Hatling from Kernersville, and Paul Norby came in and talked to us about district-wide community growth. As you can see, the areas of greatest population and growth right now is in that southeastern, southern, southwestern corridor. And you will see that impacted as well in this bond referendum as you see recommendations for projects. This one may be a little challenging for you. Hopefully, you can see it to the general public. What this basically means is these are the percent of seats in brick and mortar buildings. And so what that means is 89% of our elementary students are in the building, inside the building. 93% of our high school students are inside the building, and 78% of our middle school students. So what does that mean? That means that we have a real capacity issue at our middle school level. And a majority of our kids are, not majority, but a lot of our kids are outside the bricks and mortar of our regular schools. Hence, a need for to possibly build some possible middle schools. We'll start in elementary, talk a little bit about growth and capacity, and try to break this down, and it can be really quick with this. If you'll focus your eyes down to Zone 8, the highlighted section there, as you can see that we're 1,505 seats over capacity in the elementary setting in Zone 8. And you will see that addressed also in this bond referendum, but total of almost 3,000 seats over within elementary setting. Here are our zones. Wanted to make sure that you're aware of where all the zones and how, where they're located. You'll see, obviously, the impact of that previous map that I showed you, zones 1, 8, and 7 are where the majority of the growth has, we've been, we've recognized, and you'll see us address that in this proposal. Growth in our middle, and capacity in our middle schools, again, you can focus to the highlighted areas, southwest zone and southeast zone. Again, no surprise there, as we've mentioned that several times here in the last couple minutes, but a total of 20, almost 2,600 seats over capacity on the middle school component. Again, here are the zones and how they laid out, a little different than they are in elementary side of things, but just wanted to make sure you're aware of where they were. Yes, ma'am?
Have those numbers been projected out to see what that will do to the high school capacity in the next couple of years?
Yeah, actually, Bill and I've worked some on that, sort of what, where we look to be in 2020. We've got some pockets of potential issues that we've looked at, especially in that same corridor Glen High School is going to be.
Right, right.
If you know what's going on that side of the county with development over there, the housing unit, 3,000 houses, units that Jeff Hatling talked us about.
Right.
There's a 300-unit apartment complex being built close to Glen High School. We're going to have that, but I think we can get into the next, close to the next bond referendum before we have to deal with a lot of high school issues. But we know that this middle school's going to push through, so we do know it's coming.
We thought that in 2006, too. We were going to do it in the next bond referendum, and that was...
Yeah, and so as you go through this plan, you know, those things, those things may need to be discussed and decided upon what, you know, projects change within the plan as they always have in years past. So it's something to keep your eye on and to discuss. That's all I really have, unless there are any particular questions. If not, I'm going to ask Dr. Simonton. He can come up and talk a little bit about the programming, diversity, and equity within this bond proposal.
Good afternoon. Tied to the building, and pardon the pun, that we are embarking upon, we believe that the programming that occurs inside the building is very tied to the success of what we are trying to accomplish. So there are a couple of questions that we pose and some thoughts that we offer. And the first one is, what would be the vision for the board of what the schools look like after a successful bond referendum and building campaign? And that vision is, so what would your hope be? What would the aspiration be for? Not only what the buildings look like, but what the curriculum looks like, and what are the programs inside of the buildings? And so it's not been divided from the buildings and past bonds, and so we have continued with that thinking about, how do we connect what's happening inside the buildings with the buildings that are being built? Secondly, we pose the question of, how do we connect the bond referendum to the three goals that have been identified in the district? And those are increasing early childhood literacy, improved graduation rates, and closing the achievement gaps. So do we have an opportunity or possibility to impact those three goals as we move forward and connect those to the bond? And then, as we think about student assignment and choice, are there ways to, if you will, improve choice with the inclusion or the initiation of high-quality programs that attract students to various schools and programs? And we know that we have a history of that occurring, and in past bonds, we've identified particularly magnet schools that have been able to attract students. One example recently is the Wiley STEAM Academy. So Wiley had been an under-enrolled school, and with the addition of the magnet and the successful addition of the STEAM, they have seen an increase in their student population. Thanks to Kim Marion, who did a lot of work on this and in the spring, shared with the board some of the successes that we have had with the various magnet programs and streams. So related to this discussion, we have thought and discussed extensively about the opportunity to extend and expand programs. So how do we replicate some of those successes? We know that we have STEM schools that have been very successful. Many of those schools have waiting lists, and how do we make sure that we afford opportunities for all the students who might not have been able to get into some of those magnet schools that are STEM schools? As it relates to HAG, this year, we started with a second elementary HAG site, and with that growing bubble of students, we know that we will be required to add, or we will have to consider adding, a second HAG middle school site. So that group of students who are now in elementary school, in a few years, they'll be moving on to middle school, and how do we accommodate those students? As the number of students who are in our ESL program or who are English language learners increase, we have not added seats to what is called the Newcomer Center and/Newcomer Academy. So that number of students in that particular program have remained constant as the number of students has increased over time. So is it, is this an opportunity for us to expand that program to meet the needs of those students, particularly tie that back to the goals the district has identified? For the last 10 years or so, we have had a particular focus on high schools, small, specialized high schools, and we have certain success stories there, some that have 100% graduation rate, some that are specialized in terms of the curriculum that they offer. And is, do we have an opportunity to continue to tie the programming to the bond campaign? And certainly, in the last bond, the building of a new Carter High School was one of the things that was celebrated throughout the community. And do we have an opportunity to replicate that with a new middle school that serves low incidence exceptional children, students? And finally, this idea about innovative learning centers. Innovative learning centers, you're going to hear more about, but really, inside of schools, as we look at, how do we use spaces collaboratively? How do we include technology? How do we reconstitute what we have typically called the media center or the library? So obviously, one of the ways that we do that is we look at magnet programs. There are certain magnet programs that have been successful. Again, you have been made aware of what some of those particular magnet ideas are, how do we continue those, how do we expand those? Without making any decisions, we offer a few of those as examples without attaching them to sites. So is there space to consider kindergarten-through-A schools, K8 schools? What are the pros and cons of having a K8 schools? What might be attractive to parents? And what does that school look like? Then building on the single-gender classrooms that we have in many schools, is there an opportunity to scale up to a single-gender school? And is there an interest in the community to provide program related to that? And then, the idea of year-round schools. Several years ago, we had a number of year-round schools. Some of them were very popular. Is there an opportunity, again, to consider year-round schooling as an option for parents in the community? So the thought about the programming is to take what we currently have, to look at the options, to see are there places for us to extend and expand, to offer the highest quality of programming such that it attracts students to the various schools. And as you go further into this presentation, you'll hear about some of the sites that may be ideal to do some of that. A couple of other topics that we've talked about that we won't go into detail tonight are related to middle school sports and transportation. Just wanted to make sure that you all knew that we spent a fair amount of time talking about, is there something in middle school that might be attractive in terms of adding to sports? And Carol Montague-Davis and a group spent a lot of time talking about that. Not in detail in this presentation as well, Darrell Walker and Dale Taylor and their group spent a fair amount of time talking about, are there options related to transportation that we can look at? Wanted you to know that we talked about those. They're not covered extensively in this presentation, but if there are questions that you have about that, we could certainly answer those.
Good afternoon, everyone. You've been very patient as we've kind of laid the groundwork for this. And so I am going to go through the options for the community, for you all, and we are excited, we've spent a lot of time presenting, working on this, so we're excited to present it and start to get some feedback and start this process. Our goal, as Dr. Emery outlined, in June, was to present you with four different options. And we kind of think of these as a menu of choices in all the other past bond referendums we've done. And I don't think there's ever been a time where we've come up with a list to start with, and that list has gone through the whole process intact without being changed. So we fully anticipate you will have ideas, the community will have ideas, families and staff will have ideas, and that's what we are seeking input on. So, you know, there is a very much a part of this that you may see something you like in one option to be combined with something you see in a different option. So that's part of what our discussions will be about as we go forward. And you'll see there are places where you can kind of mix and match. For example, in one option, we talk about addressing capacity needs in Zone 8 with a new elementary school. In another one, we talk about doing it with additions at three schools in the zone. So there are different ways sometimes to accomplish some of the same goals. So keep that in mind as we go through it. We have kind of four visions for this, but there are some needs that need to be addressed outside of a particular vision. And that's what we consider our priority projects, and these are included in each project. So these are kind of the basis of, and I don't think any of these will surprise you based on discussions we've already had. The first two, obviously, replacement for Con Oak and a replacement for Lawrence. Those are both designed, they're ready to be built right away should we have funding for them, so those are at the top of our priority list. Kennedy High School is a CTE high school, started several years ago, but it's never been touched with any, you know, with facility upgrades. It sits there next to the Career Center and Carter, both newer facilities. It's a school that's done very well, and it's growing in population and academic achievement. And we think that touching it with renovations to add CTE facilities to it would be very helpful. Those are also things that could be done right away. The next two are related to each other. The first one would be finding a new site for the Winston-Salem Prep High School program. This would be contingent on keeping the academic and athletic programs intact. And what we would like to do is find a site that refocuses on the school's founding mission of being able to do college-level work in high school. It's not our idea that it would share campus with another one of our schools, but that we would find a location that would better allow it to accomplish that college-level mission. Should we be able to do that, then we would see Cameron Avenue, the former Atkins High School, as a site for Haynes Magnet. The current site at Hill, the former Hill, is not a long-term solution, we don't think, for the size of that school. And a site closer to the former residential area would also be much, would better serve residential students, much closer to their homes. Again, that would be contingent on finding the proper site for Winston-Salem Prep.
If I could just add to that, we are really encouraged by beginning conversations that we've had with the chancellor of Winston-Salem State. And so our excitement would be, our first preference would be that we could return Prep to what its original mission was, to a really strong Prep to what its original mission was, to a really strong partnership, perhaps even on that campus, where kids could earn college credit as a part of graduating from high school. The new chancellor has been awesome. I've had several meetings with him. And of course, he's new, and so I don't want to compromise his situation, but he was okay with us telling you that our preference is there and that he's highly receptive to continuing. So our goal is, by the time we would get to a final recommendation, we would have worked out details. But we also did base some of these dollars on redoing an existing structure we might own if that didn't come to fruition. So that's the reason for putting money in here, is if we had to look at an alternative site that we already have, that we would have some dollars built in to do that.
Dr. Simonton mentioned the innovative learning centers. And one of the things we were thinking about, both in terms of equality of instruction and equity in terms of a bond referendum, in the past, we've always included something so that everybody does benefit from a bond referendum, that we have a way to affect all students. Typically, in the past, that's been technology. I think we've had some discussions, Dr. Emery certainly has shared her opinion with you in terms of, you know, wondering if the best use of money is spending, you know, borrowing money for 20 years to pay for things that have a life cycle that's much shorter than that. So with that in our mind, we thought about, what are other things we could do? And we came to media centers, which, as you all know from being in a lot of different schools, media centers vary greatly from one space to another, you know, largely depending on the era in which the school was built. So how, how could we reimagine that space to make it more forward-thinking? You know, we did some looks at, you know, how do we bring participation space into it, research space, collaborative space? I think these have been a lot of the discussion with how libraries look in general across the country, certainly locally here too. But there's just so much potential in what that space could be. We have a couple different pictures of what this could be, especially as we move towards more technology, more, just media centers and libraries don't look like they used to. And how can we be forward-thinking and make sure every student can benefit from that? So looking at some of the long-term costs in terms of furniture and doing that, we have an early estimate of about $260,000 per school. So that if you did that at all schools, it would be about $21 million. Another priority project is a new middle school. We have land in a couple different parts of the county. You'll see it pop up in some of these options. So where we put it is up for discussion, but we do think we will need a new middle school based on the capacity numbers, the fact that, you know, the largest percentage of students are in mobile units at the middle school level. We've included as a priority about $29 million in maintenance and capital improvements. These are things like roofs and boilers and chillers, to keep those things updated, as well as improvements to the stadium at Mount Tabor High School. We have several stadiums that are aging and need to be, you know, repaired and kept up to date. And the most pressing of those is Mount Tabor. So just to kind of give us a starting point, as we talk about this, the priority projects come up to just short of $150 million. So that's included in each one of these options. So our first option is what we would consider the most comprehensive option. And as we walk through this, like, we thought, how can we address our capacity and our safety needs? How can we address diversity and equity through programming? And how can we use the opening of new schools as a way to create, you know, options, maybe as for year-round schools, as single gender schools, K8 schools, as Dr. Simonton described? So at the elementary level, looking at, we would, this option includes a replacement for Ashley, which would help, also help enhance its magnet program. We think be able to draw more students. It's also one of those schools that is aging and in need of updates. Brunson is in need of a replacement. I think that's been talked about for several years. And so that, this includes a replacement for Brunson.
A place other, have to move, so it can't go?
Correct. And so this includes, part of it would be finding a replacement space for. Cook Elementary, this would include, this option includes renovating and repurposing Cook Elementary, trying to figure out the best way we can use that space and serve the students. Is that a pre-kindergarten site? Is that a year-round school or a single gender school? We think that's up for discussion. That's one of the reasons we want to have these public forums and, you know, to get your feedback and also hear, is there support for those kind of ideas in different areas of the county? Easton is included as an addition and renovation. That's on that, one of those schools that is in that 17 that is more than 50 years old. At Sherwood Forest, this would replace the original building, which is one of those that's, again, on that list of 17 schools that are more than 50 years old. Continuing on, this would include a replacement for Southwest Elementary, another one of our older schools. That would also open up space in that area with Southwest and West Forsyth High School to add, that would give us a site for a middle school as well. This option includes a Zone Eight Elementary, which could add capacity in one of our most crowded zones. It would also give us an opportunity, again, to explore different ways that single gender, you know, K8, how could that work with existing schools and those kind of ideas? It includes a pre-kindergarten center that would add six pre-K classrooms. And we could, you know, does that fit in at Cook? Does that fit in in a different location? We think that needs more discussion. And it also includes land for an Eastern Elementary, looking at some of that growth that's forecast, as Jeff Hatley in Kernersville talked about. The middle school level, this would include a replacement for Hill Middle with the idea that that could be a second HAG site as we grow and need two different sites, just as we have in elementary schools. It would renovate and add at Paisley, which would enhance the IB program and in the high school grades. It would renovate and improve, we believe, improve Philo Hill Magnet. We think we could work with its existing magnet program or also perhaps that might be a good location for a STEM site, another STEM site in another part of the county that's been successful elsewhere. A new gym and renovations at Wiley Middle. And we're going to continue on. We also have land, we get into here, this addresses some of the, some of the overcapacity schools we have at middle school. We have land at Smith Farm right by the elementary school, where we could buy, we could build a middle school. We've had a couple of different ideas about what that could be. It's a dual, Smith Farm Elementary is a dual language. We could continue that program there at the middle school. We could look at it as a newcomer center for some of our English language learners that could be a K8 program between the two. Warrington Middle is included. When we built Warrington High School, the idea was that it was built as a high school. It would include the middle school until a future bond referendum, and we could add more space for the high school. So this would clear out not so much capacity at the middle school level, but it would add capacity for the high school level. We have land on Robin Hood Road. This would be able to relieve capacity issues at Metalark and Jefferson. And then by building a new Southwest Elementary, that opens up space then for Southwest Middle, which would add capacity for the western, southwestern part of the county that's also experienced so much growth, and would help schools like Flat Rock and Clemmons and Metalark. At the high school level, these are renovations for older facilities that we have, North Forsyth, the history building at Reynolds and Cafeteria, the Cafeteria and some other renovations that would be necessary, East Forsyth. So it would touch those schools that are in need of upgrades in some of their buildings. And then other improvements, this would include cameras and some safety improvements. Would bring all schools up to district standard in terms of cameras they have on campus. Would also add the same type of entry access at middle schools that we now have at elementary schools. It would also improve some of our high school stadiums. I'd mentioned Mount Tabor before. This would also include improvements for Glen North and Deaton Thompson. We also included a similar amount of money towards the new stadium at Reynolds. I think the idea being that if we are putting this money into existing stadiums, we're trying to be equitable and do something similar and put that same type of money toward a stadium at Reynolds. This option also includes improvements for our operations department. The headquarters for the bus garage and food, child nutrition are outdated, they need improvement. You know, could we use Indiana Avenue or former Haynes and Lawrence? Could that be a location where we could use some of that space if we choose not to use it as a school? So, option one, as I said, is very comprehensive, just as we started out with, you know, 400 million in 2000, for the 2006. To do all of this today would cost about $550 million. So that's one starting point. We're going to keep going. Option two looks at where are we growing, where are we aging, some of the capacity issues, some of the issues of our aging schools. Again, before we get into this, it includes the priority projects, that's the $149 million, Con Oak, Lawrence, Prep, Haynes, those projects. This would update Ashley, Brunson and Southwest, again, similar to the, you know, same projects that would be included in option one. Would also include a new Zone Eight Elementary to address capacity and land for an Eastern Elementary, future, a future site for, down the road. Again, these are very much focused on kind of age and capacities, we go through it. It would add and renovate Paisley, Philo Hill again, which in this scenario, we could see using as a second HAG site, again, as we grow from two sites at the elementary school level. This would also include a new middle school at Smith Farm, and then a new middle either at Robin Hood or at Southwest to address the capacity needs that we have at the middle school level. High school projects are included in the priority projects with Kennedy. And so this option concentrates primarily on capacity and updating some of our older buildings. Those total, including the priority projects, about $333 million. So in our second, our last two options, we looked a little bit more specifically, I think, at programs and how we could target specific things. And again, think of these as a menu of items, but when we were putting these together, there's been such an emphasis on early childhood education. Our goal of third-grade literacy is a goal that doesn't start in third grade, it starts in kindergarten and really starts before that with, and there's been so much community outpouring and support and willingness to support early childhood education as we try to reach that goal of 90% of our children reading in third grade. So the thought behind this is, how do we leverage some of that community support? How do we focus on that so that we start this, you know, early and can really have an impact on children being able to read in third grade? So this option adds 22 pre-K classrooms, including six at a pre-K center. And so one of the things to consider is operational costs are not included in this. So it would be something that we would be embarking on, knowing that we would like to try to get some community support for it, I think, and leverage some of that enthusiasm into funding that we think would support that. But also, it would, the board would need to, and our district would need to be willing to think like, okay, we're going to support some early childhood efforts to see that they're working and to see that we can have an impact on literacy. So in this option, it's really, again, tailored to the early grades. We would replace Ashley and Brunson. We would renovate and repurpose Cook. Again, we could look at it as a pre-kindergarten site, maybe a year-round or a single gender school. And this, as I've mentioned Zone Eight before, in this one, we add additions to and renovations at Easton, Griffith and Ward. The idea being, instead of a Zone Eight brand-new elementary, that would allow us to touch a couple of different schools with updates and also allow us to put some pre-K classrooms around that zone. So you'll see Ward there then is the last one of that. Southwest Elementary would be replaced. This would also include looking for an elementary school in the innovation corridor, kind of in that area that's growing. Is there a way to include that, kind of the arts and innovation theme, draw kids from all over for that? We'd like to explore that idea, get feedback on what people think of that. And it also adds a pre-K center and land for an Eastern Elementary for future use. So again, this one is very tailored to those, that early childhood focus. So if you include the priority projects, the elementary projects, the total for that one would be about $284 million. And then our last option, we looked at middle schools. How can we improve our middle school programs? That's a place where we have some of the largest capacity needs. It's a place we would really like to impact achievement in terms of how our students are doing. And again, you know, as we talked about a couple times, it's also where our largest percentage of students are in mobile units. So we really looked at the middle school level at this point. This would just focus on Paisley renovations, enhancing the IB program there. Renovations at Philo Hill, possibly using it as a second HAG site. Renovations at the gym and Wiley. It would include a new Smith Farm Elementary on the property we own there. Again, some potential there for dual language, for a newcomer center. It would include a new Warrington Middle, as well as a new, an additional middle school, perhaps at Robin Hood Road or Southwest where we have the property. And the price for this option, if tallying it up, would be, including the priority projects, about $268 million. So that is, to kind of put it in summary, you all have copies of the presentation, certainly we'll be happy to get any information you want to you. The option one is the really comprehensive kind of look at things, comes up about $550 million. Option two really looks at capacity and age, it's about $334 million. And then our last two options, looking at early childhood candidate middle schools. Again, our goal is to try to give you a wide variety of how you could see this in terms of a focus and answer any questions you have and use it as a starting point for where we want to go. Our next steps, obviously, we're going to be looking for, for public feedback. This presentation was emailed to the board, Forsyth County Commissioners at the beginning of the meeting so they could follow along. All of our families and staff are being emailed this information after the meeting. Our website is live so that people could follow along with the handouts as we talk through this. And so that's live now. And we, you know, encourage people to send feedback, and we'll be keeping track of all that so that you can see it and get a sense of what people are thinking. I think that brings us back to our next steps. Dr. Emery?
Thank you. I know this has been a lot, and we want to, we want to stop talking and give you a chance to ask questions. Just want to be sure that everyone understands that the board's really going through this for the first time and seeing it all in depth. And so while we were, we're happy to answer questions, and we have a host of people here who can do that. If you don't have questions, the month of August was really meant for the opportunity for you to dig into this and spend time with it. Again, we will dig into feedback. We really would appreciate hearing from the board those areas that you would most like us to test community support for, so that we can get that launched as soon as we get schools started. We're working on a date to have a joint meeting with our county commissioners. And of course, we'll get our public forums on the calendar for January and February. One final thing I wanted to mention, and it's a little out of, out of the context here, but our board, and I think it's really important publicly for folks to understand, our board has been receiving emails from folks who are asking them, as a result of the meeting today, to take action to approve funding and move the Con Oak and Lawrence projects along. And we really appreciate that kind of support, and we appreciate the sense of urgency. But I think that we want to be sure our community understands, we, when it comes to capital projects, we are a recommending body and not a funding body. And so we do not have the authority at this table to make, our board does not have the authority to say today. We hope that our community sees by those projects being in every single one of these options and a part of that priority package, that we are reflecting what I believe our board, our staff and our community feel, are important projects to be on the front end of any bond issue. If we are fortunate enough to find funding ahead of that, I know our folks are going to be ready to go. And design has been funded, in fact, not just Con Oak and Lawrence, but also Kennedy, are projects that will be shovel-ru- are projects that will be shovel-ready at most any time prior to a bond issue. So, Madam Chair, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. Thank you, staff, for the presentation. There's a lot to cover. And so, Board, do we have, if you have any questions, some follow-ups or areas that you already see that you would like some additional information or some, some things to head off conversations in August? Ms. Metcalf?
I found the reimagining media centers very interesting. Is it possible to get some more feedback from where that conversation came from and what your thinking was? Because that was something that's really quite different than we've seen in bonds before, so I'd love to hear more about that.
Are you, now, or would you, again?
Yeah, I'm just really, I, it's a different thing than we've usually seen in a bond, so I would love to hear more about how you came to that. Jackie, come to the microphone.
Comes from several years of various discussions with various programs, starting with the magnet school programs with some of our federal grants that we've received, the STEM initiatives that include Makerspaces, the whole umbrella that media centers work under, the Impact Model from DPI, which encourages flexible scheduling, 24/7 access to resources, all those kinds of things that have been part of media programs for a while, but our facilities have not been able to reflect true programming and use of resources. So, what the bond will give is the opportunity to at least repurpose the furniture and the spaces. Obviously, we won't get more floor space, but we'll try to create more floor space. It will involve taking down bookcases, not all of them, most of them, to create more mobile bookcases or for print materials. It will include, obviously, we're moving more to digital resources. We're using more online resources, database subscriptions, things that don't require bookshelves. And then we're converting many of our print books to eBooks anyway. Most of our reference sections, what you all would remember as your reference section, no longer exists in most of our schools now. We've converted those to eBooks, and everything that was in an encyclopedia is now an online encyclopedia. So we haven't lost any resources. And then the cost of that also will enable us to add some of the technology and the flexible kinds of furniture. You saw, you know, those are just samples, you can Google, there's a Pinterest page on media centers. I mean, it's, it's been around for a long time, and we're just, I'm just really excited about seeing the opportunity just to add that flexibility. That will also flow over into the instruction, obviously, because we're into a more collaborative, personalized learning, you know, plans and STEMS and STEAMS and all the acronyms that we have. So, we want the media centers to become more of a flexible space rather than a scheduled large group, corral the students kind of space. We want that innovation and free thinking and free reading and growing those lifelong learners that we're going to need in the coming. Those conversations have been taking place, and even in the old bond referendum, we had a lot of discussions about the bookcases need to be movable, the tables need to have wheels on them, the circulation desk needs to be a size that's not too big but manageable so that it's not so much static space, so this helps. And then, Kim's.
Well, I was going to say, I wish we could take credit for the idea, but it's a national movement, so it's really based on research. We actually have a grant with UNCG right now that are putting Makerspaces into three of our schools in the media center. And the idea is that it becomes a hub of learning, that it's a hub of innovation. So you don't just have students going there for resources, but they are engaging in the materials, the curriculum, the creativity, the innovation. And in this group, this team, because of the city of arts and innovation, it was just a natural connection that we are trying to create these 21st century learners in our buildings with the creativity, the collaboration, the critical thinking, and that this was a place to touch that in all schools. So, we've talked a lot about how we would have to have, and that's the operational side of that, where we'd need professional development, professional learning for our media coordinators and our teachers, for how this flexible scheduling would work, how we'd rotate groups through, how we could encourage before and after-school involvement, lunchtime involvement. So it's really a culture shift of moving it from providing resources to engaging the students to find their own information and resources, and giving them an opportunity to actually create. So it's that engineering kind of mindset and opportunities for that. So it just reimages that, but it is a national movement, and there's lots of information we'll be glad to provide you from kind of where this came from. But I think that the research information in terms of how it contributes to student achievement would probably be very beneficial.
Also, when we built the Walker Town building in the last bond referendum, in the media center, if you paid any attention, we basically labeled the different areas as Learning Commons inside that. We have the Reference Commons and the, you know, so we already have been using that Learning Commons, which has been, like I said, it's been around for 15 years in the library and educational world, so we, this has just been a great opportunity. And most of the schools in their visions and philosophies say the media center is the center of learning and activity in the schools, and this is a visible way through the building, through the facilities, to reflect that philosophy, so, yes.
One other question. Would the different, for example, magnet programs there, new media centers reflect differences? And is it possible that as we're looking at magnet schools, that expanded media centers, that all schools would get updated, but that some schools would get kind of super-updated in order to help support that magnet?
So, I'm going to use the UNCG grant, if I may, for a kind of a case base. One of the great things about this is that it looks different in every school. So your point to, could it be built around the theme of the school? Absolutely. Could there be additional resources provided? So for example, Kernersville Middle School that's going to be getting one is taking more of a digital production kind of focus, whereas Southeast and East Forsyth are doing more of the maker space in terms of providing equipment, more hard tools and that sort of thing, the electronics. So it really could take on the vision of the school, the theme of the school, absolutely. And we really, when we budgeted and we talked about it, we budgeted for the things that would be in common, knowing that the, hopefully, the schools would then decide based on that what kinds of things that they would want, for example, in their maker space, or in their presentation space, or research space. So it would absolutely drive what goes in there and how it functions.
Yeah, the programming of the media center and the school activities drives the function.
And I really like the idea of more money for magnet schools and the media center, yes, but.
Thank you.
You can tell these ladies don't have any passion for the innovative learning centers.
They never show much passion for their work in general. They're wonderful.
Additional questions, Board members? Not, not right now?
If nobody has more questions, I do.
Okay.
I'm very excited about the interest at Winston-Salem State, because to me, that's exactly where Prep should be. And I'm also excited about the idea of the elementary school in the Innovation Quarter, because if we're going to be a city of arts and innovation, one of the most important things we can do is put our children right in the heart of those places. Has there been, I know you had just said you had spoken to the chancellor, has there been any conversation with Doug Edgerton or any of the people down at Innovation Quarter?
No, we, we have not reached out, they're, right, right. The only, the only sort of dreaming conversations have been in coordination with CyWorks and what they're trying to do, and, you know, there's some vision there about blending support and services, but we actually envisioned this as a standalone school. And part of that was the beginning premise of what's really working for us. And we know the downtown school is, has a long waiting list, so is there a way to create something in Innovation Quarter so folks that have been on a waiting list might be attracted to a different school? And yes, there would be some different themes, but again, as you, as you stated, Elizabeth, how do we support what our community's trying to do and maybe create interest in young people?
Exactly. The, the other part is that there had, there once was a time where there was a lot more alternative education, when I think of like a lab school, more lab school, which was one of our first innovative programs. I would love to see us look at some, and again, part of this is, is the General Assembly ever going to allow LEAs to have charter-type schools in the same way that other people are allowed to have charter schools, where we could be maybe freed of some of those restrictions and perhaps have a downtown middle school that doesn't have the same kind of building or structure as standard middle schools? Because one of the things I have read in lots of places is that while there has been enormous growth in the suburbs, people are expecting over the next 20 years that there's going to be much more movement in, back into particularly smaller cities like Winston-Salem, or that more people want to live close in, in Kernersville, in Lewisville, that the notion of walkable cities. So I really think if we can have some freedom, ultimately, that's something the General Assembly, I hope, is listening and caring, that we should be allowed to innovate as well. But thank you very much, you've all done a really, really good job, and I can see how much thought went into this, and very appreciated.
I have one quick thing.
Yes, Ms. Metcalf?
I have about 10 pages of questions, but I don't want to get into them tonight because we've got a lot we've got to do tonight, but I was just going to say what Elizabeth said. I just want to appreciate all the work everyone's done, and I really look forward to the next few months, getting into the nitty-gritty and talking through these things, and it's really good work and a lot to think about. And like I said, I've got about 10 pages of questions, but I'm not going to get into it tonight because we've got some other important stuff we've got to do later on, so. But I did want to thank everyone for, for all the work that you've done, because it's very, it's very impressive work.
I'm going to, I'm going to jump on that bandwagon because I just want to take the time to really emphasize our appreciation for all the work that the staff and the school system has put into this. This has been months and months just to get us to this point, and we still have a lot of work ahead of us. And importantly, these plans really show the staffs and the school systems and the school boards' commitment to every student in this county. And as each school board meeting goes by, I feel more and more encouraged that we are at a moment in time in this community that is unlike any other moment we have ever seen. We have a school system that has very aspirational targeted goals. We have a school board that are taking actions in direct support of those goals. We have corporations that acknowledge that there are just gaps in our budget, and they are stepping in to help us with those. We have nonprofits that are stepping up and teaming up with the school system to help us with professional development, community gardens, summer learning, early childhood development, neighborhood-focused strategies. And now we have a really optimistic list of projects that not only address this growth that we have in our southern corridor around Kernersville and Clemmons and South Winston-Salem, and make sure that we address the need to build new classrooms, but also address the needs that we have in our more urban center area, where we have many children who are living in poverty and the challenges they face. And it just emphasizes the, the commitment of this staff that no matter where a child lives, or no matter what their background is, they should be able to go to their school, work hard, and achieve their full potential. And at its core, I think that's the quintessential American dream, and I am just very, very grateful for all the work y'all are putting into this, and I'm really excited to bring this out to the community. So thank you very much.
Well said, Mr. Johnson. We will, yes, Mr. Vic Johnson, yes, sir.
I was just sitting here thinking, we've got a good plan, and it's time for us to get out and get the votes. You know, it's football season, we may need to call Don Martin in here, because Don and I can tell you what took place during the other bond packages. Superintendent, everybody's working at these football games and getting these parents involved and getting these bonds passed. So we have a lot of young people here, so you've got a lot of energy here. And we need to expend some of that energy to get these bonds.
I think Mr. Johnson is ready to put us to work. Okay, so I know we, as Ms. Metcalf says, she has about 10 pages of notes, we probably have a lot of notes and questions and fine-tuning. Dr. Emery, have we thought of some options or additional times to meet with the board in August?
We have only one board meeting scheduled in August, so if you would like to have a workshop meeting, one of the things we would suggest is that, just as Ms. Metcalf, Ms. Jeannie said, she's got 10 pages of questions. Theo, as Chief of Staff, is the point person on that. Obviously, we don't expect him to answer every question, but we will come back to our teams and try to dig in and get you what you need. But if we could get that in the next couple of weeks so that we could get you back the information you need prior to a possible briefing or workshop. August is a rather busy season, which I think is why in the past we've only had one school board meeting. But I think if we have, if we're focusing only on this, it would be a really healthy opportunity after you've had some time to reflect and deliberate and get your questions to us. And I think the more public we can have these conversations, the more people learn about it, understand we're collecting their feedback too, would be really helpful. So if you all want to do that, we just need to pick a date that works for everybody.
Okay. We'll, we'll talk, we can talk about that and see if that is an option, and we can work on that. Because I do think that the sooner we start to talk about that and collaborate as a group, trying to answer some of those questions, and questions may bring up more questions, but we'll work very well together as a team. Okay, thank you again. We are moving on, we have a few other discussion items. Up next is Dr. Emery, an update on Public Education Leadership Project.
Thank you. I'm going to just stay put so this can be brief, but the chair asked if we would just give the board and our community a brief update. This, two weeks ago is the second time that we have been, I would say incredibly fortunate to take a team to the Public Education Leadership Project at Harvard Business School. The Business School has done executive training for many years and is well-known for that training. One week out of the summer, they partner with the College of Education and host urban teams from districts around the country. And we are really, I say fortunate because we don't pay the same price that the executive leaders pay. Part of the cost, a great deal of the cost is subsidized by the Business School, which is why it's a competitive opportunity, and we feel very blessed that we've been able to go two summers in a row. We take a problem of practice, and we work hard and come back with some strategies to try to address the problem of practice. This year, our problem of practice centered around how do we work as adults on that third goal, closing the achievement gap? We have great disparities in the achievement of, of some of our subgroups in our district, and what kinds of things can we do as adults, leaders, teachers, staff, to really try to address aggressively closing those gaps? Next week at our administrative... Next week at our administrative retreat, we will roll out three sort of frameworks for that that we worked on. One of those is a leadership academy. Another is a teacher academy, now that we have, as, as Mr. Johnson mentioned, some resources to help us with some very targeted strategies. So as a district, picking two or three targeted strategies that we really work on in every classroom in every school in our district that we know research will support. And then thirdly, a component that we've wrestled with, that we really have to, we have to get our arms around what does accountability look like. And so we talked about creating a formative assessment for adults in this district. In other words, just like kids, we don't wait until the end of the year for a summative evaluation. We're checking and monitoring regularly throughout the year, those things that we expect adults to do so that we send a little higher expectation about what's important in our district. And so those are sort of our, our three mainframe pieces that we came away with. We'll work next week with our administrative team to hang some more detail on that. But we, we have chosen two areas, while we put the pieces together, we've chosen two areas that we'll focus on. In leadership, that will be data analysis and application. So not only what does my data say, but how do I use that to make improvements in my school or at grade levels? And then across the district, really looking at lesson planning. We talk a lot about research-based strategies, but in the end, research says you can get tenfold from lots of other strategies by having a solid, well-planned lesson. And we know that our teachers have well-planned lessons, but what, to what degree are we monitoring them and giving folks really good feedback on them? So it's not about just having the plan, but how do we look at them, talk about them, and have conversations with staff across the district about them? So we will continue to update you. I know some of you have talked about maybe we have a routine time on one of our monthly agendas or some way that we build this in.